All right, I'd like to call the meeting back to order. We've finished our first half hour where we had our public hearing on zoning regulations. So now I'm gonna go to item three in our agenda. Amendments to the agenda.
Sir, I have two for the board if they agree. One, I would like approval to move a grant to the state for old-school bagels. This is the business grants that we help our local businesses apply to.
Under new business?
Under new business C. And also under new business D, the loan document finally came through for the water project that's going on on South Main, and the board would need to sign that.
And it's, so a grant for the bagel business and?
Loan document signing.
The grant, what, I heard a grant for bagels.
Old-school bagels is the business.
Oh, all right.
I just asked you where Ruby's birth still used to be.
Yeah, that's good.
That was, oh, got it.
Do I have someone who wants to make a motion to add under new business? Item C, grant for old-school bagels, and D, loan documents for our?
Waterline project.
Waterline project.
I'll make a motion if we do both of them.
I will second that motion.
We know what we're doing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Let's go to approval of the minutes from September 16th. Do I have a motion?
I will motion to approve the minutes as written.
I second that.
Motion was made and seconded. Any comments, questions, omissions? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Just approved minutes. Department head reports.
It's moving fast. Okay, that's me. Okay, report from the police department. Over the last two weeks, our police department's arrested three. We've had 55 traffic or municipal violations. We've had one car crash in town, and we've created, completed, excuse me, completed eight sets of civilian fingerprints. As the chief says, it's steady right now. From my office, we'll lean into Public Works. Public Works right now, they're doing the shoulder work on the roads that been paved. So if you go up to Scotch Hill, you'll see the guys up there with a couple of trucks and a machine. They're laying down the shoulders along that, along that road. They'll also be hitting the dump road when, this week or early next. So just keep your eyes open for them. They're hauling gravel for that. They're also doing some black topping, patching up some holes. They've been doing a good job with all of that. They're also doing a good job cleaning the old barn and then still moving up, up to the old barn. We need to thank Mr. Greeno for helping with the salt shed. That project's coming along really great. Thank you, Mr. Greeno. We know it's a lot of work. The guys have also been doing a nice job with equipment maintenance. Right now, they're fighting with the bucket loader, but I think those parts are coming in soon, so we'll, more on that. I've been writing a few grants lately. I just submitted an AARP grant for winter placemaking. I requested $2,000 from them to buy 12,000 feet, I'm sorry, $2,000 from AARP to buy 12,000 feet of string lights. The goal is to light the trees and light up the park for Christmas. This is something that a lot of folks have been asking for. It's something we want to try to do. I'm also helping out the library with a grant. I've completed one for them, and I'm gonna go to their board tomorrow to talk about it. They have some repointing that needs to be done on that building for the, for the brickwork. We thank Public Works. They cleaned out the drains over here on Canarvan for that project that we just finished. They cleaned that out before they hooked that project up, so that way all the junk doesn't go into the new, the new... I was gonna call it a system.
What do you mean, call that?
I don't know. I don't know what I would call that. I was gonna say system, but that's not right.
The stormwater mitigation project?
Yeah, stormwater mitigation.
That separates the sediment?
Yeah. Last food truck frenzy is next week. We did ask Bob to come down so he can set up a table and try to generate business for him. I'm gonna go out to our businesses tomorrow and see if we want to put up a local business table to kind of generate some foot traffic for our brick-and-mortar buildings, our brick-and-mortar businesses. So I'll be out there tomorrow. As part of our attempt to generate a little bit of revenue, we sold 25,000 gallons of water to the railroad over the last few months when they were doing that work down here.
Did you say 25,000?
Yes. As a heads up to the board, Seal Hunt has resigned from the EDDP formerly known as the EDC. We'll be posting, we're looking for more volunteers for the EDC if anybody's interested. A1, the drain company finished up the sewer repairs here in Town Hall. They were here for, I think, two days, and they replaced, if not all of that sewer line, most of the sewer line underneath the building. A lot of it was rotten and leaking, and even that, that main pipe that went straight down into the ground, that sucker was cracked and leaking. So that, that fixed the air quality problem we had in Town Hall. And then on the second, which is Thursday, Mike from the water department is in our meeting with the engineers to talk about replacing the filters in the water plant. And then there's a leak coming out of that wall. We're gonna talk to him about possibly repairing that, too. So that's a long, that's, this is the very first conversation for both of these things. So it's a long-term project, but it's, we're starting to move that forward. Upstairs, Mr. Wilson and I have been picking away at the ceiling. I got more demo done yesterday, and Mr. Wilson put up, this is the barber, Mr. Wilson. Mr. Wilson put up a couple of panels, so it turned out really good. So this, this project is not gonna be as bad as all that. It's gonna take time, because I just pick at it, but we're getting there. We're making progress with the concerts. Erica has lined up contracts and bands for next summer. We're waiting for those folks to send those contracts back. On the 18th, we're having our thank you dinner for volunteers for the concerts. Those invitations went out. And I signed up, if anybody is interested, I signed up for, I signed up for development conference on the 30th of October. It's up in, I think, Burlington. But Dominick Cloud is gonna be one of the speakers. He's from St. Albans. He did a great job with their city revitalizing their downtown. I really liked the way he approaches development, using his community's ability to finance things, to get projects done. If anybody's interested, I can give you the link. I think it's worth, worth a listen. He comes at, he approaches things a little bit differently than, than most communities do. I think that's all I got for you. That's what I have written down.
Questions for Joe?
I have one. You said Seal resigned from the EEDC. What is the EEDC?
Economic Development and Downtown Partnership.
It was formerly the EDC. It is now the EDDPs.
Oh, okay, so I wrote that down, Rob, because I heard different letters.
You will hear those two used interchangeably still, but the current name and acronym is the EDDP.
Okay.
Is, there's a meeting next Tuesday still? Yes.
So EDEP is a new?
EDDP. Economic Development and Downtown Partnership.
Oh, my God.
It's a mouthful.
It's a lot. It's a lot. If I recall correctly, the name was the recommendation of?
Ties into the downtown designation and everything that's going on, yeah.
Just EDDP. It's not much easier.
Any other questions for Joe?
I did have a question. With respect to the food truck frenzy, I heard the recommendation made from a few people that we do something to increase the amount of lighting around the crosswalk and the area over in front of the downtown block relative to what we had last time around. Has that already been taken into consideration, do you know?
So we talked, we did talk about that. I do have 500 feet of lights that, I think Friday, we're gonna go out and figure out where we're gonna string these. Yeah, the crosswalk and trying to connect downtown with the park, so that way we can get some, some flow right there is important. Yeah.
Anything else for Joe? Moving right on, old business, there isn't any. So we're gonna go to new business, and I see under A liquor license, FTF. Food truck frenzy. We're into acronyms. I like that.
Shall I make the motion? Or do we need to discuss first?
No. Well, just, just a little background?
Sure. So this is the, we're doing the same thing this time as we did last time. The Fairly Buzzed and our Fall Mountain Wines will be setting up in the same location across the street from the park in the, in front of businesses. They'll be cordoned off again. There will be additional lighting and tents this time.
Good. Now I'll entertain a motion.
I would like to motion to approve special events permit for Fall Mountain Wine LLC.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
And I would like to motion to approve a request to cater permit for Fairly Buzzed LLC.
I'll second that one also.
Rich seconded. Questions, comments? All those favor?
Aye.
New business B, phase protection for WWTF, wastewater treatment facility.
Thank you.
Yes. A few months ago, a few months ago, we had a phase of electricity go down, which shorted out some very expensive equipment in the wastewater treatment facility. The insurance company is covering most of that, but as a way to prevent that from happening, happening again, Kerry went and got some face protect, quotes to install face protection on the, for, for our plant. We had two, two bids, one from Slate Valley for 25,750, and one from Alliance Group for an amount of 29,600. So Slate Valley was, was the low bid. We're requesting these funds be taken out of the Sewer Capital Improvement Fund, and currently there are 384,666 dollars there. So you have the money to do the project.
Who are you recommending?
We recommend the Slate Valley.
Are they the local one?
Yes, they are.
That's what I was gonna ask.
That is our local, that is our local.
Even if they were a little bit more, but my vote is for Slate Valley.
And Slate Valley is, he's, he's always done his?
Dan Gray, right?
It is Dan Gray.
It's Dan.
Awesome.
Any other question, comments?
Yeah, just given the numbers here, I'm curious if either or both of those bids include contingency for overrun on costs, or if they're not?
They, they don't.
That itemized or involved, okay.
It's not that itemized.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments? I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we award this to Slate Valley Electric.
I second that.
Questions, comment? We know what we're doing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item C, a grant for old-school bagels, the business downtown.
Yeah. So the, the EDDP voted at their last meeting to move old-school bagels, the request for old-school bagels, grant application forward to the select board. And now we're asking the select board to approve us to now move this grant to the state. This is a, this is distinct grants this award, but the town, the, the business doesn't receive the fund, the town receives the fund. That's why we're going through this process, because the select board handles the money. We've done this in the past with a few businesses, the brewery, for example, I think they got 20 or 25. Soldier got some money to do some work on their, on their building. So, yeah, we're requesting that the board approve this so we can submit this to the state. He's requesting a little more than $5,000 for equipment, oven, fridges, and a?
Yeah, no, that comes to us, but then we help him with it. Is that, that's all it works for.
He, he, first, he has to actually spend the money, and then we reimburse him. So we don't lay out anything until his, his portion is complete.
So that requires a motion and a second for us to do that.
I have a question about the business. Is, okay to ask that, or?
You can, go right ahead.
Is that just like a bagel plate, or do they serve something other than just bagels? I mean, I've never heard of that.
Because the planning commission?
I've never heard of it, so.
So Mr. Workman, Bob Workman, will be opening the business, running it with, alongside his wife, as I understand. And he currently operates a wholesale bagel business where he sells to a couple of restaurants in the area and distributes in that fashion, and he'll continue to do so while also now operating that space as a bagel shop and cafe essentially. But in addition to the bagels that he already bakes, he's going to be making additional bread products. He told us what a few of those were when he came to the planning commission for approval for his signage, and he mentioned, I think he said Babka, or maybe I heard about Babka through the grapevine, I can't remember. Bab, did he say Baklava as well?
Baklava.
Baklava? That's interesting. And one aspect of his business that he highlighted was that he uses all organic flour and all organic ingredients.
So it's gluten-free?
Well, not gluten-free, actually. So when it's organic, it just doesn't use pesticides. And, but it's interesting that you mentioned the gluten-free thing, because he described his wife, he told us a story about what's kind of inspired the business, and apparently his wife for many years abstained from eating gluten. She removed it from her diet, thinking that she had a sensitivity to gluten. But what they believe they've found is that her sensitivity was actually to a pesticide that's commonly used on wheat. And they, by using organic flour in his baking, he's found that she doesn't have the same discomfort eating bread as she did when they were using non-organic flour. So that's what inspired the, the organic aspect of the business. Yeah, he seems like a pretty nice guy all around, I would say.
Oh, it's cool.
Rose, you want to say something?
So I was here, I had a very nice conversation with Bob today. I got a lot of little tidbits. He's going to be, we're opening up between six and seven in the morning and going through to five o'clock at night. I believe he's gonna be closed on Mondays and Tuesdays, like everybody else.
He was still weighing that at the planning commission, kind of figuring out the hours, yeah.
And he's going to be having, so along with bagels, different kinds of breads. He will be having breakfast, like egg sandwiches in the mornings, in the afternoons, what he'll be doing, any different kinds of sandwiches with the homemade breads and stuff. He will be having salads. He'll be having a, he was describing like he'll have a tossed salad, and then have, where people can buy like a, a package of the homemade, fresh-made tuna or chicken salad or something to add to the salads, or like a grilled chicken type thing with the Caesar salads, that sort of stuff. And he will be having sweets, including his, how did he put it? Famous New York-style cheesecake.
If you say cannolis, I'm sold.
He did not mention cannolis, but he did say brownies, cookies, muffins.
Nice.
Can you remember anything on it?
No, I went back inside.
Okay.
I was busy.
So anyway, it was, it just happened that I had that conversation with him this morning. So I've spread the word.
And his plan was to open November 1st, if I read the minutes correctly?
The last I talked to him, he was still hoping for November 1st, but I, I think we might have to be waiting a little bit longer.
Thanksgiving and Christmas, perfect.
Yeah, he actually told us today, October 29th.
Perfect. So I will entertain a motion to approve the grant, you said $5,000?
A little more than $5,000.
Okay.
I make a motion that we go ahead with the grant for $5,000 for?
Okay.
Old-school bagels.
Old-school bagels, yes. I was trying, I didn't want to say bagels, but just old-school bagels.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any questions? You know what we're doing?
This was a, an EDC recommendation for revolving loan.
EDD?
EDDP.
P?
EDDP.
Yeah, yeah.
Which stands?
Good job.
I don't know, but EDDP.
Say with confidence, it's fine.
I wasn't here for conversation, but I'm aware of the EDDP involvement.
Good.
Bagel bar.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
And they also, is this where I can share with them, that there's a letter of support?
Yes.
Now that we've voted that in, there's a letter of support that we send with the grant that I, I will sign for the board, that we think is a wonderful thing and we should do it for you. You're good with that?
Should we motion to sign, or is that given? Okay.
Yeah, I would. So you know we bought into it, we're good. Okay, let's move on to loan document signing for the water line. We wanna just briefly give us a general background of that.
Sure, this is, so the town voted to do the project. It's been bonded already. The state's been slow rolling this for months. So we finally got the loan documents in place. This is on, this is the state, the Vermont State Revolving Loan Fund is the one providing the funds to us. Here I have the loan agreement, a few exhibits that need to be signed on the back, and then the actual certificate. For one, it's Glenn only, and there's paperclip where you'll find the location for you guys to sign. So this is only Glenn, but for everybody else, there's a spot for you to go to the paperclip, sign for the board.
So I'll entertain a motion to sign the loan document for the water line that we put in.
I will make a motion to sign the document, the loan documents for the water project.
Do I have a second?
Well, seconded.
Seconded by Keith. We know what we're doing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
This is for one. You're the only one that signs that one.
Our department.
Their chain services.
On the paperclip and on the paperclip, right. So if you saw the negative balance in your checkbook, that's because this particular program owes us like 1.1 million. We'll be requisitioning those funds soon.
What's, what's the status of the project? Is it pretty well completed, other than the paving, patching in here and there?
Yeah, they're pretty much done. They were flushing, they were flushing the line, yes, yesterday, I saw it flushing the line in the morning. There's still a little bit to tinker with, but yeah, they're about done.
Two places, yeah.
Doesn't matter where, just everybody here.
Two different spots. Nope, next one.
Over here.
Might be one in front.
That was a copy of Mr. Greeno. Paperclip on the?
Right, right, right.
Okay.
There we go.
You can have that one. Okay. Hadn't got that far.
And the reason I'm not continuing on is I'm running five, six minutes ahead of schedule, so that's good. It has been a busy summer with a lot of, a lot of good stuff that we've been wanting to happen for quite a while that's happened. The waterline project, the paving, the, the stormwater mitigation, it's the salt, the new DPW building and salt shed. It's been a?
I actually went back and looked.
Enter here.
I looked back at the Scotch Hill project, because I was, I was repositioning those funds. We have currently almost $600,000 into that road right now, from what we did last year and what we did this year.
Oh, yeah.
And it's not done.
Oh, my God.
What road is that?
Scotch Hill.
Oh.
It was that bad?
Oh, yeah.
We put in 200,000 worth of culverts and roadwork last year, and 380 this year. It turns into money fast.
It's real money. Okay, I wanna, let's, why don't we get back to item nine, two minutes for public comment? Am I, oh, any comment? Yes, we're there.
So I would like to reiterate, because I keep seeing more and more of it, especially now that school's back in session. I think it would be a really, really good idea to, for those of you who are working on the different ordinances, to maybe take the skateboard ordinance and expand it to include electric or non-man powered vehicles, like the electric scooters and the electric mini bikes or whatever. Because I, I mean, I just sit there at the office and I just watch, and somebody's gonna get really hurt, you know? And I'm really hoping it's not one of my little old ladies or little old men that are trying to get to my office, as these kids are just zipping around and not paying any attention to anybody but themselves. I'm sorry to say it, you know, but that's, I, I observe it every flipping day. She can attest to it, too, because she's right there as well.
I had one do that on the sidewalks on West Street. Just like the other morning, I went to back out and I just, and I was that far from hitting it.
They're not paying attention. They figure, they, I don't know, I can't, I can't attest to their, their way of their thinking, but they are endangering other people and property. And I was also wondering, for the food truck frenzy, Joe, you had mentioned about putting lights across the street. I'm, I'm not sure what you were talking about there, but I was wondering if the crosswalk signage that we got, is that any, is that at all close enough to being able to, maybe we could put those up?
Oh, if not.
No? Oh, dear.
We'll work on it.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Moving on, parking lot. Anything from the board members on the parking lot items?
I don't have anything new specifically to mention about the blighted property ordinance since last meeting, but also given Rosie's comment and sort of what my discussions with VLCT around our ordinances in general have been, I think maybe there's some opportunity to address a few concerns on a few of our ordinances at the same time while we work on this, but more to come, I would say.
Thank you.
I have a question on the blighted property ordinance. Does that consist also of?
It does not currently exist.
Well?
I just wanted to tell you that.
Well, is there an ordinance for, say, somebody pops up a camper in your yard, helps with electricity and like moves their kids and their family in and uses it periodically? Because I know it's on my end of town that that's.
That would be a potential violation of zoning.
Right, I'd be going, your zoning plan and?
Okay, I was just curious, it was brought to my attention, I noticed that, so.
We're handling that. We're handling that.
But we need to, we need to revisit, we need to revisit that.
Okay.
Yeah, because.
That needs to be revisited and, uh, because of the way it has to operate now, we've got to revisit that.
Yeah. I mean, there's some, there's some rules there. I just, I would be afraid of misspeaking.
Well, it was brought to my attention by, you know, taxpayers and they've seen something and I says, I will inquire about it.
It's being worked on. I think we're talking about the same one.
Yeah, oh, my, by my end of town, yeah.
There's a couple.
South side, yeah.
Okay. Anything else under parking lot?
Um, we have transfer station operation under parking lot. I don't recall why we added that to the parking lot. Can you refresh my memory if you do remember?
So that's, that's been there for a while and that's mostly to keep me on task. So we, we've made some changes to the transfer station, but there's always more we can do.
Right.
Um, when there's, when there's time, um, we make new steps, we make new strides, but it's there because it's a never ending thing, at least not right now.
And, and in my fairness to Joe too, the, what's, since we put it there, uh, we have paved the road to the transfer station, have put a swap shop in and where you see the refrigerators and everything else that burn, there's been some things and it all had to with, with seeing if we could run more effectively too and everything. So there's they, they're, they're making progress. You're, you're making good progress. You're doing a good job about it.
While we're talking about it, I'll just, uh, remind the public, anyone who might happen to be listening, this Saturday is our hazardous waste collection day at the transfer station.
Household hazardous waste.
Household hazardous waste collection, very good qualifier.
Yeah.
Uh, from eight thirty AM to twelve thirty in the afternoon.
Good.
Um, so please make a point of stopping by.
Good. All right, moving on to board roundtable. Sam, anything?
Ah, yeah, what do I have? Um, we, Joe and I were talking on the phone earlier today and I may have mentioned, uh, of this earlier that I am keeping my ear to the ground, trying to find us a new conference table for this meeting room. Um, I haven't found anything yet. I'm hoping for something free or donated. So again, to the public, anyone who might happen to be watching, um, if anyone is aware of a conference table or a meeting room table, about eight feet by four feet is what we're looking for. Um, please do make a point of coming to us and letting us know. Um, you'd have a willing recipient, uh, in the town office. Um, and there was something else. I, I, I suppose I wanted to make a request for the future, understanding that every situation is a little bit different. Um, but as with things like the bid for the, um, uh, WWTF work that we're doing and some other items that have come up in the past, whenever I am voting to appropriate money, my preference would always be to have more information than less. So I would just make an appeal to anyone who's bringing something like that before the select board in the future. If we could look at quotes and look at bids, um, just to have a better sense of what it is we're voting on, I would personally be greatly appreciative. I think we can do that without adding too much work to anybody's plate in the future. Um, and it would certainly make me happy, so. Um, oh, and actually, on that point, I did go through the park over the last week and I know we haven't put in our, uh, our pad yet, our walkway. Um, and I just wondered what the status of that was, if anyone knew. No?
Yeah, I haven't got there yet.
Okay.
Probably, and probably will be next spring.
Oh, that, that might not be till this spring.
I, I don't see it happening.
Okay.
This fall.
I'll keep my eyes peeled.
Good.
Thanks, though.
Good, I'll, Keith, anything?
Uh, yeah, I have a couple of things. Um, doing some, uh, looking on the Fairhaven website itself. Anybody that wants to move to town or looking into Fairhaven. I noticed that, I don't think a lot, I don't think it's been updated in forever. Um, it says businesses on there still, Callex, who's no longer here. China City's no longer here. York Map Auto is no longer here. I looked under the auditors as well. The agenda and minutes hasn't been updated since twenty thirteen. Or twenty twenty-three, sorry, October of twenty twenty-three. Police Department, um, update on, I know there's either one or two new officers there. Job openings, how many of those jobs are still open? How many are closed? Um, and if I was looking to move to a town and I went to the website and see all these things and get there and realize these businesses aren't there or vice versa and just think it should probably be updated on a regular basis. Um, I don't know if this goes back to what Rose talked about, but the crosswalk signs that I, we mentioned at previous meetings, I came to one and brought it up. I don't know if that's what she was enlisted on the crosswalks. Um, two more things. I know last meeting or the meeting before, I mentioned the stop sign coming this way. Um, I don't know if it's feasible to possibly make that the right of way again, because again, I've almost been hit, stopped there because there's cars parked here for one thing or another coming into here. And you can't see when you're creeping out because everybody coming this way doesn't stop. If they don't put the blinker on and you think they're going to go around the park and they go straight towards the school. I'd like to see something better or feasible there, other than a stop sign and then the right of way coming at you when there's traffic. You can't see left to pull out, do you even make a left hand turn? And the last thing, is there any other businesses that anybody knows of maybe coming in other than the bagel one? Is there anything?
Uh, well, there's a dance studio that's about to open or maybe has just opened.
Is that right beside, uh, the dojo or, okay, gotcha.
Yeah. And.
Sorry, it was on one spot.
I can't think of anything new, except that, um, Fairly Buzzed LLC, who is going to be attending, uh, as a vendor at the food truck frenzy. I feel like they've made, I, I had some discussion with her that maybe she's thinking about something in the future, but I, I don't know.
Is that local? Is, that there's.
She, I think she, I think she lives in town. It's, she's, she doesn't have a brick and mortar, she's a caterer, um, but I know if she, her, I think her, her gears are turning, but otherwise I haven't heard any rumblings about new businesses.
Okay. Rich.
Well, it's been brought to my attention that, uh, it was mentioned earlier about the ordinances. Uh, particularly the travel trailers set up in people's yards. I, I think we really need to revisit that ordinance. I know it's, I guess it's set up right now so that the code enforcement officer has to do most of the work on it and then it has, they have to go to legal and all this stuff. Where if we could update that a little bit more, it's my understanding that it would go a lot smoother and quicker. So we need to revisit that.
Which ordinance is that specifically, Rich?
It's part of the, the.
The zoning violence?
Zoning, zoning, yeah, zoning laws or whatever it is. I'm not super up to date on it at this point. This is just coming to light this year for me. It just seems to be something that's happening across the country and it's, uh, it's moving into our area somewhat now.
Yep.
So.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Good.
Chad. Ooh, um, just a reminder to folks, really a call to action to pick up after yourself around town. Um, Erica posted on social media about the, uh, ball field and playground area having quite a bit of trash left behind, despite the fact that there are, uh, a good number of trash cans, uh, readily available. Um, so I think, you know, if we, if we all take part in picking up after ourselves, we're, we're gonna have, uh, certainly a more attractive place to invite folks into. Um, as, as far as the website, I know at one point, the recent, uh, the EDDP was interested in uh, revisiting the list of, uh, uh, businesses and there was talk about the, the website as well. Uh, I wasn't at the last EDDP meeting, but, uh, I would imagine it's, it's on other people's minds as well, myself.
Yeah, it was just something I noticed and I went through and seen, well, this one isn't here, this one isn't here. And those are the three that popped out at me that I says, well, maybe we should look into this, you know, make sure everything's up to date. So if somebody doesn't want to visit or move to town, they know what's here and what's not here.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Outside of that, I think I'm good.
Um, I forgot, I have one more kudos to throw out if there's time for it. Um, I was attending Efficiency Vermont's Best Practices Exchange Conference in Killington last week. Um, and, uh, our own Wayne Charlton, uh, our captain of the volunteer fire department was, uh, awarded and recognized for some work that he did, uh, at the Rotten Regional Medical Center, where I believe he's an HVAC tech. Uh, a project that he worked on over, I think, uh, more than a year that, uh, found great efficiency and cost savings for the facility. Um, and they, uh, they gave him, uh, uh, some recognition at that conference and I thought it would be nice to recognize him here as well for his hard work both at the hospital and, uh, on our fire department as well.
Absolutely.
Oh, Wayne.
Very good.
Yeah.
We're fortunate. Anything else? No. I'll just, no complaints. I just want to, on that same vein, we, we have people that are volunteering like the work, I don't want to embarrass Rich, but the work you, you do with our DPW and our salt shed, the folks that are working with the food truck frenzy. The, the people like, uh, Rick Wilson, who's helping us upstairs and, and I'm sure I'm going to be missing and, and that, that's a pretty cool thing that's going on right now is the number of people that are saying, how can I help out? And doing things that we, we don't always see, but they're, they're folks doing some very good stuff. So we thank them. There's a town, we need them. Okay, moving on, financial, uh, reports, uh.
I'll make a motion to, um, approve and pay the warrant, the general warrant.
Uh, where are you?
General warrant.
Okay, go.
General warrant, uh, hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one dollars and fifty-eight cents.
I will approve that warrant.
You'll second?
I will second that one. Apology.
Okay, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Single-handedly approving. Uh, I'll make a motion to, uh, uh, approve and pay the payroll warrant of forty-one thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven dollars and forty-eight cents.
Keith is going to second that?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And our.
That one, did you?
Checkbook sits at negative three hundred and forty-eight thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty-five cents. And we are owed some monies that we are anticipating soon.
It's not time to panic yet.
Yep, we made, we, we made some big payments and money's still coming in. Good.
Uh, I'll make a motion to go into executive session under one VSA three thirteen A one attorney communications.
I will second the motion to go into executive session.
All those in favor?
Aye.